Good evening, and we're calling to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for May the 6th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. This is in the Harry Butter Selectmen's Chambers at the Norwood Town Hall, which is at 5566 Washington Street. Hopefully, a pretty tame agenda tonight, so we'll try to move quickly. We have a couple of items before we have an appointment at 6:40, so we'll see how many of them we can get out of the way. So I'm going to start with item one, which is the warrant signature. Well, you know what? You're right. I'm getting ahead of myself. Look, I'm trying to go so fast, I forgot the most important part of the meeting, which is we're going to rise for a Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, now, we'll move through our list. We'll start with item number one, warrant signature update. Do I have a motion?
I move for approval of the warrant. A second.
All right, moved by Selectman Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. And then, item number two, meeting minutes for approval of the board for April 8th and April 15th. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, so I'm going to go through a couple of items from new business, and then, as usual, if you have an item that you want to have discussion on, just call for a hold and we'll pull it out of the lineup. Otherwise, the rest will get approved in a single motion. So I'm going to start with item 4.1. I'm going to put a hold on this, which will be the committee assignments. This will be for discussion, as well as item 4.2, we will discuss, which is related to the Norwood Housing Authority for the board vacancy. But item 4.3, item 4.4, I'm going to place a hold on. Item 4.5, I'm also going to place a hold on, both of these are related to Moderna. Item 4.6, park permit application from Heritage Baptist Church. They are looking to submit a request to use the Disabled Veterans Park on Chapel and Berwick Streets for worship service on Sunday, June 29th, from 5:00 PM till 7:00 PM, estimating 50 to 125 attendees. And they've been given the park rules and regulations, and they have knowledge of them from previous park use, so that'll be item 4.6. Item 4.7 has been withdrawn, so no action there. And then, item 4.8, I also have on hold for discussion. And then, item 4.9, cemetery deeds. And then, one late item, which is 4.10. I've added this late because this came in, this is very sort of standard for us, which is our Memorial Day celebration. This is just the formal request to actually have the event, and so this was submitted from the Veterans Agent. This would be for the parade and ceremonies on Monday, May 26th, 2025. They would be at the mass at 8:00 AM, and then they would have a lowering of the flag to half-staff at the town hall at 9:00 AM. Parade groups mustering at 9:30 at Old Parish, and then stepping off at 10:00 AM from Old Parish, and then ceremony will take place at the Highland Cemetery following the parade. And so that would be item 4.10. So if everyone is good with the items that I've listed, 4.3, 4.6, 4.9, and 4.10, I'll take a motion to approve them all in bulk.
So I move to appoint the items 4.3, 4.6, 4.9, and 4.10.
All right, second. All right, motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so that will take care of those. We still have a couple minutes. Perhaps we'll take care of filing memoranda, just to get that out of the way, unless anyone has any discussion. So that's item 5.1.
Motion to approve, 5.1.
All right, motion made by Mr. Sad. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. So we're pretty close. We got five minutes. Do we want to, why don't we start a little discussion, because I don't expect it to last long, on the one-day liquor permit and the one-day music permit? So this is items 4.4 and 4.5. So these are both coming in from Moderna. The music permit, that's pretty normal stuff, but the liquor permit, my understanding is this one is, they're not planning to sell it, but they were concerned that they had a large amount of attendees for their event, so they wanted to make sure that they were coming forward and seeking approval, if that's necessary. We had some question whether they even need the approval, because even though their application, they had listed a potential of 1,000 people, they think it's really going to be more like 300 people. So if it's a case where they don't actually need permission, then we would just handle it the same way we do with anything where someone asks for permission, but they didn't technically need it. But if we feel that they do need permission, then I'd be open to hearing motions.
Just a suggestion, usually you need a liquor license when you're selling alcohol, a one-day license when you're selling alcohol. I don't think that's their intent here.
Right.
But it's a large event, and they may want to make that decision at the last minute, just to control it.
Okay.
So I think approving the one-day license would be appropriate. We'll make sure that the police department takes a look at it. They have given us a lot of information. Quality of the application-wise, it's probably among the strongest we've seen in terms of actually having crossed all of their Ts and dotted their Is. My recommendation would be to approve it, but make sure they let us know whether or not they are intending to sell it, and that they get back to us. If they, in fact, are, we're just going to want to make sure we know one way or the other.
Yep, okay. All right, well then, in that case, do I have a motion, in light of that information?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Moderna, for the date indicated, 14th of May.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. Any further discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. And just, as we mentioned, make sure that we get confirmation from them one way or the other. And then, on their music permit, item 4.5, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, that takes us up to close enough that we can see if our appointment is available to come in. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello, have a seat. Thank you for coming in to see us. As everyone's aware, we've been making effort to ensure that we get department heads in to visit us every once in a while, so for the benefit of folks at home who might not yet know you, can you introduce yourself, and we'll get right into it.
Sure. I am Carrie McCrappy, the Director of the Norwood Senior Center and Council on Aging.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you for having me. Here to provide an update on what's going on at the Council on Aging and the Senior Center. While I know you receive our monthly statistics, I wanted to take a few moments to offer some context behind the numbers and highlight the essential services we provide to the Norwoods' older adults. The Senior Center plays a critical role in supporting the health, well-being, and quality of life for our aging population. We strive to provide a safe, welcome environment where old adults can engage in social, recreational, educational, and wellness activities, helping to combat isolation and promote active, healthy aging. Some of our services, we have a transportation service. For years, we only had one Senior Center bus. We now have a Senior Center bus, two vans, and an electric vehicle. We have seen a significant increase in demand, particularly since the Norwood Hospital has closed. Our out-of-town rides have definitely increased. Many of the follow-up appointments are now in, you know, a person gets taken to Good Samaritan or to Newton-Wesley, B.I. Needham, that's where all the follow-ups are going. So we're going now to Needham, Newton, Foxborough, Denham, Canton, all over the place. Our drivers are also busy with local rides, ensuring that residents remain connected to their essential services here in town. Our lunch program continues to thrive. It is, since COVID, we started doing drop-offs at people's house, home-delivered meals. We have great volunteers that do that for us four days a week. We have a grab-and-go, and then folks can eat in the Senior Center as well. It's a great intergenerational program with the Education Co-op, and we're serving hundreds of lunches a week, so we're really lucky to have that program. In terms of outreach, we assist residents with fuel assistance, SNAP benefits, home care and housing referrals. We're seeing increasing demand with mental health needs and evictions. We're seeing some homelessness. We're fortunate to partner with Metro West Legal Services for legal guidance, and our SHINE volunteers help residents navigate the Medicare and all their health insurance needs. And those volunteers, we have two a week, and they are booked out weeks in advance. They're a vital resource to the community, for sure. Program at the center, it remains strong. We offer a variety of exercise classes, games, educational events. We have some great day trips. Last fall, a group traveled to Ireland, and this September, a group is going to Nashville and Memphis. So there's still spots available if anybody wants to go. And I have great staff. Our program director, Nancy, does a fabulous job making sure that when you walk into that center, you feel welcome in that center. And we have a new program assistant, Rebecca, who is following right in Nancy's footsteps and making sure that when someone comes in for the first time, they want to come back to the center. And our outreach team and transportation coordinators are doing great. So we're very fortunate to have a great staff. Our bus drivers are all community-based. They all live in Norwood, and they just love this town, so we're fortunate. And the last thing I want to say is the District Attorney's Office is going to have a shredding event at the Senior Center. We have them twice a year, and the District Attorney sponsors one of them for us, and it will be May 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM, and this is open to all residents, so anybody's welcome to come drop off their shredding. And that's it. Thank you for obviously supporting the Senior Center. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right, well, I will turn it over to the board, see if they have questions or comments for you.
I'm looking through the program. It's so impressive, and I'm not there to see me yet, but I'm real close. But I see the shredding, the barbecue, and full of information, and everybody says that you guys are the crown jewel of the Commonwealth, so continue the great job.
Oh, thank you.
And all the people up there doing one full job, so we just appreciate, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Carrie. The transportation program looks great. I'm looking at the newsletter here, and you have a great write-up, and it really is quite extensive that you can transport people as far as Newton, Norfolk, and Wellfam. Do you have any folks at the Senior Center who have indicated needs to go beyond that radius, or?
We do get some Boston requests, but fortunately for us, HESCO can help provide those rides. We've tried a Boston ride, but it's just not worth the driver's time waiting and the parking, so HESCO does help us with those rides. But yeah, sometimes we'll stretch it, you know, maybe go a little farther than we should, but sometimes it's a very short-term need that these people have, so we do our best to accommodate them.
Great. And thank you for, and to your staff. I was there a few times recently for the comprehensive plan, running some meetings to get outreach from some of the folks. Like to do it again, probably another time or two before the end of the month, but your staff has been great. I'm reading Kathleen's outreach letter. It's great. You're getting folks involved with so many things. The Norwood Hospital, letter writing.
Oh, we've been doing a lot of that.
That is great.
I think we're over 500 letters right now.
That is great stuff. Your newsletter is so good, and I was wondering, and you have a number of local businesses that do advertise, and if somebody has an interest in an ad, how do they go about contacting?
Well, they can contact me, and I'll reach out, give them the contact information for LPI, which is our publishing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here.
Of course.
It's always great to have you come in and give us updates. We're always really positive, so just wondering if maybe some of your colleagues in other towns have talked about some of the trends. I imagine maybe you have conversations about the hospital and the need. Just if you could maybe enlighten us on some of the things that are trending in your world.
Sure, so we actually just had a directors' meeting recently, and we talked about the hospital, and we had our legislative meeting, we also talked about the hospital. And even the folks that say their residents don't go to our hospital, I remind them that their ambulance does come to Norwood.
Yeah.
So maybe they don't come to Norwood Hospital, but their ambulance is certainly helping us here in Norwood, so that's how it's impacting their community. And they're also all doing the letter-writing campaigns, Westwood, Denham, they're all helping with the letter campaign, but they're seeing, they're seeing people go. You know, Walpole, especially, they're seeing residents kind of in the same situation we are. They're going, they're being transported to these hospitals out of our area, and now we have to get them to their follow-ups. Or their loved ones can't even get to visit them in the hospital, so they're seeing the same, even though they're not in the Norwood ZPO, they're seeing the same issues as we are.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah. Thank you.
Of course.
And then, for my part, I was curious to know, since we have you in tonight, if there are particular events or activities that you find that the seniors would really appreciate having a presence from the board at them, just let me know which ones, and we'll make sure to prioritize those on our to-do list. Do you know any off the top of your head that you think that they would have us at?
Oh, sure. Well, as you can see, in the newsletter, we're having our cookout, but we will be starting our Tuesday night suppers, and those are a great time for you guys to just come by, say hello to people, maybe help serve a dinner or two. That is a really popular event. It's low-key, we don't have, you know, much going on, it's just a bunch of people getting out of the house and socializing, having dinner, so they're awesome along on Tuesdays. I try to send you invites to the larger things, but sometimes those smaller, you get, the folks get to have a little bit of conversation, ask you guys questions, and just have a nice dinner with us. So you're more than welcome anytime.
Excellent, great. I'll add that to the list. And thank you so much for the invites as well. They're very helpful for us as we try to juggle all of our different, all our different appointments, but we definitely want to make sure that the seniors are in our rotation and high on the priority list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, any further comments or questions before we go ahead and let Carrie head out for the night? All right, well, thank you so much for the update.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for your support.
Always valuable and great to see you.
Thank you, Carrie. Have a safe night. See you.
Take care. All right, so if we switch back to our agenda here, we'll go to item 4.1. At your place, you should have a little spreadsheet. This is, as a reminder, we are taking a little inventory of people's committee assignments, making sure that no one wants to change anything or trade with someone, or if there's something someone has a vested interest in that they'd like to get involved with, talking through trading. The one that I have on my list is, up to this point, we've had me on the MAPC, and instead, what I'm going to be recommending is that we instead slot in Sarah from planning, are they still calling themselves planning?
Planning and Community Development.
Community Development. Slotting in Sarah from Community Development instead, and have me serving as the alternate. We thought that would be a better fit. So that's one change from my end. And then, as far as I'm aware of, I have not heard a lot about anyone else desiring changes, although I did want to double-check with Mr. Sad if you had any in mind.
I thought about jumping on that budget balancing committee.
Budget balancing?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Yeah. To that point, Madam Chair, I think, Mr. Sad, that's a good idea. In conversation about looking at sort of the structural deficit and what that group may entail, as a representative on the budget balancing, I would be willing to maybe take a look at that, get off of budget balancing, and then therefore, you know, Michael, take my place.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Lane.
I think that would be a good fit, and, you know, it tends to be not meet for a while, and then, you know, obviously around the budget-building cycle, meet more, but it's a good group, and I think you would enjoy it, and Mr. Plask goes on there, too, so.
You've been around the block enough, you know what the budget is.
No, it's, right, and it's a good way to learn, you know, some of the school budget and those things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. And so then, we, Mr. Lane had asked a question about it for the effort that we're putting together on the deficit study committee, whether we had an inclination to have two reps from the board, because I know Mr. Donnelly has expressed an interest, but also so has Mr. Lane. I don't see why we couldn't. We've had other times where we've had two board members represented on a study committee. I know Mr. Plasko and I had served on the town meeting size committee before, so to me, that seemed fine, so if you're.
The better.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, Mr. Plasko had some observations from our last meeting regarding a couple of additional tasks that the deficit study committee could look at. Originally, the first draft that the board got was specifically speaking to FY27 and working with department heads and the finance team to define how departments could, what impact would they have for FY27 budget that's just reliant on regularly recurring revenue, not free cash. Mr. Plasko made the suggestion that we expand that a little bit to perhaps take a little longer-term look at the implications for the five-year forecast, perhaps a dive into use of free cash and make that also part of the study committee, and with that, sort of advances the scope of that committee a little bit, so I think the two members from each of the three committees starts to make sense. So I think that's fine, too. And Mr. Mazuko, you and Mr. O'Neill, I'd like to probably just sit down with you as well to hammer out some of the details about that, so that's a long-winded way of saying Mr. Lane has a good suggestion there, and I support it as well.
Excellent, all right. And then, I last spoke with Mr. Plasko yesterday, just to double-check, and no changes from his list either, so I think we're good on this, so we will update our list, and then that'll be our assignments.
Great, and we probably, not necessarily now, but at some point in the next several months, we probably want to consider maybe putting together, the trash contract is, believe it or not, is I think up FY27? No, FY28, so it may be.
We got a little bit more.
A little more time to kind of like, think about that.
I still have some PTSD from the last one.
Yeah, yeah.
I could use a year.
It's not a fun one, but, you know, that is two fiscal years away, so that's another one to keep on the back burner for now.
Like the deficit, trash will be a thing that we want to have long-term thought and planning around, because it's not going to get cheaper.
More trash talk.
Yep, trash talk, exactly. Look, I am a big proponent of puns, so just be prepared. All right, so I believe, I don't know that I necessarily need a formal motion on this.
We'll get the sheet updated.
Yeah, we'll update the sheet. So we should be good. All right, that brings us to the next item, 4.2. This is to affirm that we will be having a joint meeting with the Norwood Housing Authority for the purpose of filling a board vacancy. The intended meeting is for May 27th at 7:15, that's 7:15. And then, this is just to affirm that Housing has agreed to meet at that date and time, so we will get that posted up. We'll post up our Selectmen's meeting, but we're additionally going to post up a separate, specific joint meeting, just to make sure that our bases are covered there. We have forwarded to Housing our list of applicants that were submitted to us, at least all the ones that we were aware of. And then Housing, you should have at your places copies of the applicants that they had received, so that both sides have traded copies of all the known applicants. And does anybody have any questions or comments on the Housing Authority appointment? Mr. Donnelly?
In terms of process, so we have a number of applicants. Is our joint meeting, you know, to consider meeting within the applicants, or is it for us to review the information submitted and meet with the Housing Authority on the 27th to come to an agreement on an applicant?
Process-wise, did we have any communication from Housing on what their preference was for that?
They come in next end of the month, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, Mr. Donnelly's question was whether or not you'd be interviewing all the candidates or just meeting with the Housing Authority and picking based on their resume.
Which I think would work, personally, but it might be something we might want to ask Mr. Barnacle to check with his board.
Suppose that he does want that, is that something we're comfortable just handling through correspondence, or would we need to meet again?
I think we can handle it through correspondence, yeah.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do. We'll reach back out and make sure that we're both on the same page about whether we're going to be interviewing anybody, or whether we're going to rely on just a screening of the applications.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further questions or comments? All right. I don't think we need any motions for that, so that should be good. Okay, so if we move down our list, that should take us down to item 4.1, oops, sorry, microphone, item 4.8. This is just a small update from the motions meeting for town meeting for Monday, which I was able to attend. There's only two small things relevant to our interests. One of them is just procedural. We have a motion that we had made to adjust down an amount, and so the flow of that will be that they will read the original motion with the original amount, and that our lowering of that amount will be considered an amendment, and then the town meeting will deliberate on the amendment, and then if the amendment were to pass or fail, that will determine what happens with the motion above it. So that is the only complex one. And then the second thing is just a little bit of a backup plan, which is normally, traditionally, when we have motions from the Selectmen, we typically get the vice chair to be the second on the motion, but there's a chance that our vice chair might not be available, in which case, my recommendation would be for Mr. Donnelly to substitute for that seconding, because Mr. Donnelly is already authorized by the board to do warrant signatures, so it seems like a natural fit to go from vice chair down to that, and Mr. Donnelly is available.
Do you need a motion on that?
I was going to do that as a motion, yes.
Make a motion, approve Bob as the secondary on the town meeting warrants.
Right, moved by Mr. Sad to have Mr. Donnelly serve in Mr. Plasko's place for seconding for town meeting. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Mr. Lane is the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right.
If possible, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we could get the motions emailed to us prior to town meeting, that would be great.
Yes, I have a whole big stack.
Ah, you have it right there, all right.
I'll be handing and going over.
Beautiful, all right.
So have no fear, we will make sure that you know each of the ones that you're signing. All right, so I believe that is everything on the list. I don't think I've missed anything, which means that we can go down to the managers' update. Item six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick items. One, just on Norwood Hospital, we will be doing a joint task force meeting with the Neshova Valley Task Force in about two weeks. We keep running into some, just some scheduling challenges. Of course, we have 20-plus people on our side, and there's 20-plus people up in the North Shore, so we keep finding dates, and then somebody keeps whacking them, but I think we've settled on a date sometime around the third week of this month, and we're going to hear from them about their process and what has worked and what has not worked, and their update, and we're going to share the same with them, and then likely, we'll do a press release after, or probably issue some sort of a joint statement between the two task forces. We've gotten our first batch of data back in from the state. I had mentioned this a few weeks ago, it's sort of like pulling teeth. It doesn't show anything we didn't expect, but what we're doing now is taking that data, getting it prepared to go into a report form, because that's obviously something we have to do, is a report with several sections, but the next sort of phase of our outreach and social media campaign is going to be pushing some of that data, so some of it doesn't look all that drastic, but if you have a town, let's forget about Norwood, but let's say you're Plainville, and all of a sudden, you have an ambulance out of town in extra eight minutes now compared to before. Well, if you're doing 10, or 20, or 30 calls a day, how many minutes you now no longer have an ambulance in that community that you did before the hospital? So we're just, we're getting that out there. We've been working with our public safety partners, we're going to let them know the We're going to let them know the numbers. I mean, they're their numbers ahead of time. But in some way, in some cases, it will be a little bit controversial. Some folks in the region, we know our numbers are terrible here in Norwood with the outreach, or with the change in time. But some towns are going to say, you know, hey, X-town, did you know that since the hospital closed, ambulances are now, there's now 40 minutes a day you don't have an ambulance available in your town? And we don't do that to scare people, but the truth is scary. So we do want people to know. So that's what we're going to be doing to get that out there. Representative Rogers is able to get an earmark for a sort of economic feasibility, economic impact feasibility study, which is part of the report that we're going to try to draft, that we have to get to the state. Obviously, we have the emergency medical services, the tie-in to healthcare in the region. That sort of third section was going to be the economic impact and the housing impact. So that'll help just expedite that. Once we get done with the first section, we go on to the second one. But that can kind of happen contemporaneously. So we'll just shorten that whole timeframe, if you will.
Great.
Any questions on the hospital before I move on to just one other small item? Not that I have answers necessarily, but...
Mr. Donnelly?
The earmark from Representative Rogers, is that for FY '27's budget?
Uh, correct. But we're two months away at this point.
All right. And then Mr. Sad?
I'm not sure if we, I was thinking of this. I was over at Needham Hospital last couple of weeks ago, and the hallways are packed. We need to get a photographer over there, and these other hospitals, taking pictures and send to the governor, and letting them know what we can do to say, this is why we need a hospital.
Conceptually, I agree with you 110%. It violates a number of laws to take pictures of patients in hospitals and send them out there. But if you were there with your grandmother, and you happened to take a picture of it and post it on social media, I mean, I certainly don't think any of our detectives are going to do anything about it. I certainly couldn't formally direct staff to do anything like that, or members of the task force. But if you happen to be in a hospital, and you want to take a picture, not showing people's faces of the beds stacked up, and post that to social media, I think everyone would know, because we all know what's happening everywhere. And some pictures of it getting out there would be great. We can't expect nurses and doctors to do it. But if you're visiting an ER, unfortunately, and you're seeing that happening, by all means, I would encourage folks to share that with the world.
That's what we'll do.
And just one other modem item, if I could take just a moment of personal privilege. As the board's aware, I did lose my mother last week unexpectedly. And the board was fantastic. My team here at Town Hall has been fantastic. Norwood Police and Fire were great in their support, and just the community as a whole. We had the services this weekend in Norwood, as it always does, really did shine and really show through. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We are very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
All right. So we are down to selectmen's addenda. So I am going to start on my left. We'll start with Mr. Lane.
Uh...
Sorry, if I ambush you, I can go the other way.
Yeah, why don't we go the other way?
Okay. All right. We'll start with...
I have a few other things to give them.
We'll start with Mr. Sad, then.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank and congratulate the South Norwood Fish and Derby for all the people that helped out in the heavy rain. It held off from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. A lot of fish were caught. 2.4 was the biggest fish. And we had a great crowd. Sam White and his team, nothing but great things about what he does for this town, and how he's shining in the light of helping the kids, selling ducks, to getting in the river. And it was spectacular. The Norwood Sportsman's Club had a very successful derby last weekend, Saturday. One young angler caught a five-pound bass, another one caught a 14-pound catfish. Seventy-seven kids enjoyed the guile pond, and it was just a real spectacular day. And one more thing, we have the grand opening on May 9th for the Bernie Cooper Park in South Norwood. And a rain date is at the ball school. If it rains, we're going to do it. A rain inside. I've got waters and stuff that I've been commissioned by the South Norwood Committee to get, so they're in my garage, ready to go. And that is it, Madam Chair.
And then on that, the ribbon cutting, even if it's raining, we're still going to try to do the ribbon cutting outside. But all of the, you know, speeches and other festivities would switch to the launch if it rains.
Okay.
We should know the answer to that by Thursday, essentially. Great.
That's it.
I can do it. I'm ready.
All right. We'll swing back around to Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to add, along the same lines, on Friday, May 16th at 1:00 p.m., the grand opening dedication of the Tyler J. Lawrence Park at the Norwood Memorial Airport. Again, Friday, the 16th, 1:00 p.m. And that's going to be a really nice event, too, also through the Recreation Department. So Mr. Sad was right. They're doing really good stuff.
Yeah.
And then my understanding is we may have special guests at that event. So I think it will be very important for the board to have a very good showing. It's a really important event to the community, and it'll be very nice for as much support as we can get. So I encourage board members to attend if they're able.
Great.
Anything else?
No, and just also, you know, my condolences, Mr. Mazuko. So it was a nice service. And, you know, it was nice to see all the photos of your family and you as a young man. So I'm sure your mother's really proud of you. Yeah, so, and you can tell.
He still considers himself a young man. I do, too.
That's true.
That's the best part of public service. Mr. Donnelly?
My condolences as well, Mr. Mazuko. And Mr. Sad, thank you for the derby. I actually had an opportunity the day before to help stock the ponds with fish. Thank you for the invitation.
Oh, that's right. I forgot. Isn't it spectacular?
It was a great day.
Golden trout, the brown, the rainbows.
Yeah, they were beautiful. Beautiful.
Thank you for that, Bob.
No, thank you. Couple of announcements that I have here. One is, coming up on May 10th, Saturday, it's the Letter Carrier's Food Drive. It's always the second Saturday in May. This is in support of the Norwood Food Pantry. It's an annual event. Local postal letter carriers this week will be picking up your donations to the food pantry. If you put your non-perishable donations in a bag by your mailbox, they will deliver it to the food pantry, serving Norwood and Westwood. The list of most needed items are located online at norwoodpantry.org. You can check their website for further information. But that is this Saturday coming up. And thank you to the pantry for the announcement. And thank you to the postal service for, again, organizing the Letter Carrier Food Drive. And the other plug I will have is Curbside Compost Pilot, Food Composting Pilot. It's been successful. We are up to 650 participants. We have taken, with that number, we have achieved a really good discounted rate from our provider, Black Earth Composting, to the extent that our pilot can now be extended. We do have an appropriation that is extensive enough, or is well enough for take us through the September 30th of this year. So we are looking to add about 50 more folks to bring that 650 to 700. And right through September of this year, there's information on the town website, but we also are posting the information, such as this, along other postal boards throughout town. So if you haven't signed up for it, please do. Go to blackearth.com and just put the Norwood address in there. It will bring you to the information about how you can register for the pilot, which will continue through September 30th of this year. And finally, I noticed, well, not finally, I noticed that we now have information here at the Town Hall. This pink piece of paper is fundraising for the Fourth of July Celebration Committee. There is information here that provides for donations to the Fourth of July Celebration Committee, helps to raise the funds needed to put the parade back on for July the 4th. So that's information that's also available here in Norwood. And finally, nice job on the annual town report, which some will be available here. And I guess it's online as well.
Yes. The digital copy's online.
So it has a great picture here, a picture that's near and dear to my heart. A very, probably not seasonal picture as we sit here in May, but a nice picture of the gazebo at Morse Hill Veterans Memorial Park. It's a great photograph. Thank you.
Good job, Tony.
Didn't get a credit for that picture, but, well, compare cameras. I bet I can find mine faster than yours.
That's not fair. It's only for the money.
And that is all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the chair, so I have one item here for us, which is that I got word from Senator Rush's office that they have secured some funding, and they are interested in having a ceremony for us to receive this gift of funding. This is to, this is for the restoration over at the Norwood Central Station. And so they're interested in having a little acceptance ceremony. And then also, I was planning to reach out to the Historical Commission. So this is going to, intended to be for May 13th around 1:30. And so my plan was to see if I could have the board direct the chair to work with the manager, and we'll reach out to the Historical Commission and get it arranged, because it's coming up, and it will happen before the next time we meet.
A motion to authorize the chair to work with the manager and facilitate the great money that Senator Mike Rush cut for the town in Norwood.
Motion made by Mr. Sad. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Anything further? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Our last item on the list is item eight, which is an executive session, which would be for purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And if we were to go into executive session, then we would only be coming out of executive session for the purpose of adjournment. And so we would be concluding the broadcast this evening. And so do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Does this need to be a roll call?
Yes.
All right. So roll call, Mr. Lane, Mr. Sad, Mr. Donnelly, and the chair also votes yes. So we will be entering into executive session and only exiting executive session for the purpose of adjourning the open session. Thank you very much, and everyone have a great evening.